I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. October 26, 2021. First thing is a public comment, and I know we already have one here, so please state your name and your public comment.
Hi, so my name is Stephanie Vance. I live in Atchison with my five children and my husband. I have a few, just, I wanted to give some feedback on the Atchison County Health Department that we recently, as a family, encountered, that I thought you all should be aware of. I have some notes because my husband couldn't make it, so I hope that's okay. But my husband had a breakthrough COVID case a couple of weeks ago, and he had a positive test at home, and so I encouraged him to go to St. Joseph's, and he received a monoclonal antibody treatment. So he did all of his treatment in Missouri, not here. I called my children's doctor to try to find out about testing, and they said we'd have to do six separate telehealth visits and pay for that in order to get tested. So instead, they said, which I didn't want to do, obviously, I think testing should be free. So they said I could call the county health department. They did not pick up the phone for two days, never returned my calls. Third day, I finally got someone to pick up the phone. They said, we don't have any testing available. I told them my husband was a positive case. And they said, well, you can come by next week. They gave me an appointment. They also said they'd been out of test swabs for months. That it was going to be another few months before they could get them in, so my baby couldn't even get tested anywhere in Atchison.
This is for the quick test, correct?
Nope, this is for a PCR test. They could only do a saliva test, which you spit in the tube. They said they didn't have any tests available. So the next week, so then at the end of the call, they got all of my information, my children's information, and my husband's information, which I thought I was giving them to get ready for the test because I made an appointment for the next week. Instead, they released my husband's private health information to the Kansas Department of Health without his consent, without my permission. Kansas Department of Health started calling my husband. At this point, it had already been almost 10 days. He was about to go back to work. He had complied with everything that Missouri asked him to do. He had complied with everything the hospital had to do. So when I went into the health department, by the way, none of them were wearing masks, which I think if they're going to be in charge of deciding what our children have to do for seven hours a day and at least make recommendations that they should follow by example, they only put a mask on when I walked up to the window. I'm sure they realize that as vaccinated adults, there are very low risk for serious disease, but our children are at even lower risk. So I think they should follow by example and, you know, and do what they tell the rest of us that we need to do. So then, I'm there, and I tell them, you know, I didn't give you permission to release this information. They won't stop calling my husband. He's already done an investigation with Missouri. He doesn't want to do another investigation. And they said, first of all, they said they didn't release information. They said the hospital must have done it. The hospital already confirmed. They can only release cases. They said this would be HIPAA violation. We would never release private information to Kansas Department of Health. And she said, well, it doesn't matter because if he doesn't go through the full investigation, your children will never be back in school. To which I said, he's an adult. I can't make him do this. You're going to punish my children with their education. And they said, yes, we have that power. And just read the quote, "We have the authority and we will use it." So needless to say, this was a very stressful time. We're new to the area. This was not something I wanted to deal with. I believe community testing should be easy, free, efficient, that I shouldn't be treated like this as a citizen, especially when I'm trying to get my children tested and doing the right thing. So my question for you today is, why are we allowing this group of people who cannot order swabs, cannot answer their phones, cannot respond to messages? They don't know how to test people quickly and efficiently. We're 19 months into pandemic. They don't know what they're doing. Why are we allowing them to give us recommendations or make any decisions for our community? I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me. Like, why are we allowing them to have, you know, give us guidance on whether we should close things down? Why are they allowing us to require small children to wear masks with no end in sight, with no guidance, when they don't do it themselves? So I think it's time for all of you as elected county commissioners to take charge of all of these pandemic-related things. And I think that it's time that they focus on the things they did well before the pandemic because clearly if they had to have been competent at some point, they just aren't now.
Thank you. More public comment?
Thank you, Stephanie. I'm glad that you gave that public comment. I will share our meeting with Dr. Fast and Sheila Bost. Are two folks that sit on the multi-county health board with Commissioner Knoll. And that's been my stance recently because many people have came to me with concerns and complaints. And I've pointed them to those folks because they can actually do something because they sit on the board. Myself, since I'm not representing the county on the board, I feel like my voice isn't heard, and sometimes I come off as a critic when it's not that way. I'm just trying to take public comment and pass it along. So I will let, make sure Dr. Fast and Sheila Bost both listen to this meeting today and understand your concerns to act on it.
If they want to reach out to me or they need additional information on what happened, I'm happy to do it.
Can I have your telephone number?
Yes.
636?
9695. And I'm Stephanie Vance.
So it's not my turn to talk here, but when you were trying to call them, that wasn't by chance when Vibe was having all their phone issues, was it?
I'm not sure.
Because I do know that they were down for a week with the Vibe.
They couldn't get messages?
No. Most of the city of Atchison, their phones wouldn't work, wouldn't take messages.
But shouldn't that be a huge, I mean, should there be some other way for the community to? They don't allow walk-ins. I mean, you have to get the phone.
Correct, but I'm just saying the phone, the phone system for a week, their Vibe was down. And it wasn't just them, it was most of Atchison. You couldn't answer the phone, you couldn't leave a message, nothing, so.
The phone would ring for them, they would pick it up, and it would hang up.
No, it never would have done. I got the answering machine when it happened.
So, and you may have heard the recording from the answering machine. If it was during that time, I'm not making excuses.
If that's the?
All of Atchison was, all of Vibe's.
I mean, that's the least of my concerns, threatening my children. Being in school is the worst.
I maintain their phone system, so that's why, that's why I was like, if it was during that time, that it could be why you didn't get your phone call. Because we actually, I mean, every county office was that way. When Vibe was down, people couldn't make the phone. The rest of that, I'm completely sorry for.
And I know, we had a previous case there where they were talking about the, and it turned out to be the answering machine. And they have the, they are logging every call, and they've got 60 calls per person that they are answering. So I know that, I saw the, I saw the logs, the logs.
Should my number have been logged?
Well, I don't know what was going on unless it was during this, it may not have showed up.
I have a log from Vibe and I have a log from our phone system that we're comparing, so I will check to see if you.
So more public comment?
Yeah, please. First of all, thank you, Commissioner Knoll, for two weeks ago, we had the meeting. You followed up on the issue with the Mar Hill when they closed with one case. And one of the things that I wanted to address was the concern I have, you know, as a parent, when schools being shut down with one case, you know, the way you said when you researched that they were given a choice of two options and they chose that.
There may have been more. I just, there was options. They discussed every option through with KDHE, what they, their recommendations and what would fit with what was going on at the time, what would be appropriate. I think that they had the option of doing swabbing everybody that came in, which for the day and a half, they thought that it was probably the best option to just close down it for a day and a half. Early since they were going on the fall recess anyway, I don't know if that's the correct term, fall break? Yeah, so they just decided to go a day and a half early, not go through the swabbing or what other choices they had. They just thought that that would be the simplest, most efficient way of taking care of the problem. And, you know, that was KDHE regulations or suggestions. I think that Morehill made the right choice.
Well, the concern I have as a parent and as a citizen is this, that with one case, that seems like a pretty strong reaction, and I'm concerned that the school felt pressure to do that. And that concerns me because, you know, with one case, we've got to be able to function, right? We essentially now have COVID as a new kind of flu and cold in the community and in the world, right? And it's no longer a secret. It's no longer the novel coronavirus. We're all sick of it, right? You know, and so, you know, it's been traditional in society for people to govern themselves with those kinds of health issues. And I think we're at a point with this where the health department and really the county leading health department needs to transition to letting people self-govern on these issues. And what I'm worried about is these institutions are just concerned, I think, if they misstep, they're going to be closed down. So in some ways, what I feel like Morehill did was they closed down kind of preemptively out of fear. And I think they're even afraid to have parents talk about it. And I think that, you know, they're very capable of dealing with it, just as I think people have gained capacity to deal with it. And I just encourage the county to encourage that. There's the famous words of Ronald Reagan. He said, the most terrifying words are, "I'm from the government and I'm here to help," you know? And I realize people are here to help, but I think there's a time and a place for that free exercise without having to consult the health department to start occurring. I just wanted to encourage that. It's kind of a larger issue that was a part of what prompted that last two weeks ago.
Well, on that, I would say a little bit different. There has been more than one case at Morehill. I mean, so it never did rise to this investigation or conclusion is because I think the process was working, that this was an individual that played sports, was, so there was high risk of contamination or transmission from that, and then the school function afterwards. And so I think that in their due diligence to see where the exposure could have been, there was too high-risk areas. So that made this case different than the run-of-the-mill cases that, because obviously there's been more cases somewhere, you know, that have been individual and with individual cases, and then the contract tracing would allow them to test just a small group of people. So I'd seen the estimate was 88% of the student body had the potential of being exposed because of two different events. They also contacted the opposing football team because they were there. So this reason I said I thought that they made the wise choice is because in this, in this instance, there was such a high degree of amount of students and who else? I mean, there would have been faculty or whoever was in attendance, coaches or anybody that made this a higher-profile case. So I just thought that for the day and a half, and I hope, and I haven't heard of any, that it turned out to be a spurt or event, but I haven't followed up on whether that was or not. I hope it not.
Yeah, I think cases everywhere. I mean, Benedictines had cases. They go up, they go down. I mean, we have the flu, it goes up, it goes down. We have the cold, it goes up, it goes down. I know, actually ironically, and during the fall break, the kids got together a lot. They were happy about the time. They were doing bonfires and all sorts of stuff. So I think, I think the contact happens one way or the other because they're kids and they're going to live. So, but the big point I wanted to make is, first of all, I really appreciate your follow-up, and that's very important. And then the second thing is I just want to see more and more autonomy being vested in the community itself. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have anything more for that? Are there any other people online or that have public comment? Okay, thank you very much. Seeing none, we'll keep on. Or you wanting to stay for the meeting or? Okay, okay. I was just anticipating you, you're free to stay. I don't mean to suggest.
I got anything more. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you much. I'll try to be back when I investigate.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, thanks.
Okay, reading approval of minutes. Have you had a chance to read the minutes?
I have. I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Minutes are approved, two to zero. Commissioner comments and committee reports. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, I got it. Quit it.
So I am going to come back again this week with how important the countywide sales tax is to Atchison County as a whole. It is, I'm just going to kind of summarize what I've learned and where we're at so far and how the time is running out for county commissioners to save this countywide sales tax. So the dollar figures we're talking about, I'm using 2020 sales and use tax. Again, for the county as a whole is $2,866,363.70. I know for many of you that are hung up on what we at the actual courthouse receive back from all of our cities, that number is $1,865,689.46. What that countywide sales tax is funding right now is our joint communications, which is our 911 center, and solid waste, which is our landfill off 286th and Neo Show. And then we have a second location, a satellite site out in Effingham. Senate Bill 87 was initially testified, testimony was to take the money away from the cities and give it to the county to pay for these services and then distribute the remaining out. Since that testimony and the resolution that the county commissioners approved, two to one in support of that, Senate Bill 87, what we learned at the Kansas Association of Counties Conference last week is now Senate Bill 87 will sunset our Atchison County tax for us. So win or lose, next legislative session starting in January, if Senate Bill 87 passes, that will just kill it for us and we will lose our Atchison County wide sales tax. So just want to let everyone know, if that's not the course that you want to go, please talk to Commissioner Knoll in District 2. I feel like the rural folks are going to, is going to get hit harder for us in the long run. Also, if, you know, if that's the way we're going, which appears that we are, I would encourage everyone to start saving now because with the solid waste and joint communications, we're going to have to pick it up in property taxes or fees because that's a big number that we're, that we're going to lose out on. In talks with the solid waste director, we are the only county in Kansas that has a satellite site. So the Effingham solid waste facility would more than likely warrant discussion of closing. And then also for folks like that live in Valley Falls, they just contract with waste management, and you don't have that local option for a county solid waste facility. So again, I'm trying my hardest to get the word out. I've talked to many people in my district. I'm trying to make your voices heard. I've talked to many people in Commissioner Knoll's district. I think the problem is no one, I mean, it comes down to the citizens and the people, and no one is voicing their concerns to Commissioner Knoll. He hasn't heard anyone have any problem with this. So I just, I want everyone to know that when this comes down to it, I hope you pay attention now instead of when you get your property tax statement and it's too late. So anyway, that's my comments for today. Thank you.
I don't have anything today for comments. New business before the board. I had meant to say right off the bat, we have a quick, two things of business with Kim Glover from Road and Bridge. The first is the authority to award contract commitment of county funds. Can you talk just a little bit about what that is?
Yeah, so both things that we are asking you to sign are in regards to the KDOT project 3C 496301. It's the Hyrisk Road Project. The first one is the cost plus net fee agreement for construction engineering. And then the second one is the actual, the bid for the contractor that they're going to use for this project. This project is fully funded 100%, so there will be no cost to the county. We just need to sign acknowledging what contractor they're using and the fee agreement that they've come up with so that they can move forward.
So are these two separate things that need separate votes?
Yes, they are two separate documents. They just happen to deal with the same project.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to pass the authority to award contract commitment of county funds, which says a combination of bid items and construction engineering less than $176,820 of federal funds will require county matching funds in the amount of zero. So it's been moved, and I will second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pass is two to zero. Within the second portion of this is.
I'm trying to find a card that kind of says, it's an 18-page document.
Mind if while she's looking, if I add one thing to my commissioner comments that's bugging me? I used a constituent example of waste management in Valley Falls, but I also wanted to let everyone know, if you're like me and you're Martin Trash in Atchison County, like, they, if they haul outside of our county, obviously, they're going to incur additional costs. So I wasn't, I wasn't proponent of waste management. I just want people to understand that the costs, not having solid waste in Atchison County, if that's where the discussions go, whether it's Martin Trash service or waste management, like, it'll be affecting them. So I just didn't. Like that hindsight, oh, I shouldn't have voiced it like that, so.
Sorry about that. So this table right here shows the local authorities' participation of 0%.
Okay. So this portion is. I'm just trying to figure out what the title or what this part of is doing.
That's, it's the front page. It's the cost plus net agreement fee for construction engineering services for the whole project.
Okay.
So that's why it's got it broken up there. The local petitioning authority has the 0% participation fee, and then the other part says that the secretary has 100% participation, participation fee.
Okay.
So it's fully funded 100%.
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion, or I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve this.
I'll second.
It's been moved to second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Pass is two to zero. Thank you, Kim.
Sorry about that. It's kind of hard to read. And they're all in different places.
Yeah, some of that, you find that snippet of what describes it perfectly, and then you can't find it when you need to. That's my fear all the time. So thank you very much. Do you have anything else, Kim?
No, thank you.
Okay. Back to the regular agenda here. Preservation grant, project seal bid opening.
It looks like you've only got one for that, the portico roof replacement. This is going to be from BRT Construction. It looks like the project total would be $19,980 even.
Okay, is there anything in there as to the scope of work that they're doing or?
Well, there was a bid packet that ran out that included the scope of work.
I didn't know whether, sometimes I have that with it.
It just says that they have carefully examined the invitation for bids, notice to contractors, the quotation package, proposals, scope of work, plans and specifications, and also having examined the site. Hereby propose to do the portico roof replacements at the Atchison County Courthouse with all appurtenances and accessories in complete and a workman-like manner, furnishing all necessary materials, equipment and labor, therefore, all in accordance with the plans and specifications on file with the county for the Atchison County Roof Replacement Project. Said work to be done in strict conformity to the plans and specifications subject to acceptance of the Atchison County Commissioners at the unit prices following. And I gave you the project total already. That's all, I guess.
Okay, I would like for Brian to review this bid and come back with us with a recommendation. So would we table that or do we need to make a motion for that?
I don't think you need to make a motion. As what you typically do is you have your bid opening, you have, but it's something to make a recommendation later.
Okay, we'll have Brian take a look at that. Okay, the next is the engagement letter for Gordon CPA for 2021 audit. Is this the second year that we've, for Gordon CPA, I believe it is, is it the second or third?
Third is correct.
Third. We've been very happy with their services. Is there anyone online that has anything to add to that?
I think that all of us that have been involved with them would be perfectly fine with your decision to go back with them.
Thanks, Connie.
Sure.
You bet. So do I hear a motion to sign a engagement letter with Gordon CPA for the 2021 audit?
So moved.
And I will second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pass is two to zero. Next, Westlander Emergency Management.
Good afternoon. So the emergency management side. We should have a copy of the Emergency Management Performance Grant application. This is an application that I apply for every year. With all this stuff and all the protocols that we follow with emergency management, we were able to get this grant through the state, from Pema through the state of Kansas. It's in the amount of $20,560. And I just need you to sign on page two. Below, Jack, I just scratched Jack's name out. I didn't know he wasn't going to be here today. Do you have any questions? So we use the MPG grant to pay for supplies and handouts along with our COBRED system. This actually is what we pay for that with, the COBRED system that we alert all emergencies to all the citizens with.
Okay, do I hear a motion to allow me to sign the application for emergency management grant?
So moved.
I will second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pass is two to zero. Do you want that right now or are we just leaving it in here? Next.
Okay, so for the IT side of it, I have two purchase orders for you today. Okay, so for the IT side of it, I have two purchase orders for you today for renewals. The first one is the Converge One of Minneapolis, Minnesota. It's for a single wire renewal. This is what makes the paging system on our countywide phone system work. And it's for a three-year licensing and maintenance in the amount of $4,474.50.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pass is two to zero. Next.
One more purchase order. This is to Converge One again. This is for the Dell UNC Maintenance and Licensing for Digital Storage for the county. This includes both onsite and offsite of our main storage and then also our backup storage. It's in the grand total of $9,964.21. And this is a yearly budgeted expense.
Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
I will second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pass is two to zero. Anything else?
That's all I have for today.
That's enough. I agree. Okay. Next item is Stephanie Barnes, Project Concern Letter of Support. Is she on?
No, she might not be on, but you have the letter of support.
Yeah, I just didn't know whether she was on and wanted to say anything. This, I'll just go ahead and read the letter. Atchison County Border Commissioners fully supports the application of Project Concern Inc. to the Kansas Department of Transportation for operating expenses to help support the transportation program in the city and the county of Atchison. Congregate meals and meals on wheels for the homebound provide to many of the citizens of Atchison and those at the Effingham site are essential for the physical and mental health of our senior citizens. The transportation service is necessary in this area because it is the only service available in our community that provides regular transportation for the elderly, handicapped, and others at a minimum cost. Atchison County fully supports the project, Atchison County fully supports what Project Concern does and every year approaches appropriates to them the sum of $125,000. Sincerely. Chairman, Vice Chairman. So do I hear a motion to allow me to sign this letter of support?
Absolutely, so moved.
And I will second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Project Concern is definitely an asset to our county.
Brown County has recently, commissioners have defunded the meal program for the county. That's a big deal. Okay. Okay, next is older unfinished business. County Councilor Updates.
The tax sale has been filed and we're proceeding with service. I got news that several of the returns were filed today, so. Is everybody?
Okay, anything else?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Executive Session. I believe that we have.
Yes, I'd like to have a one. Is it okay if I make the most?
Yes, yes.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into Executive Session. The subjects to be discussed during the closed or executive meetings are matters relating to security measures at the Atchison County Courthouse, a public building. The justification for the closed meeting is that discussion of such matters at an open meeting would jeopardize security measures that protect a public building and is authorized under KSA 75-4319B12. The Board will come out of Executive Session in the conference room of the Emergency Operations Center, 10410443 US Highway 59, Atchison, Kansas 66002, at 2:05 PM. Those present will be the county commissioners and Sheriff Lori, Connie Ellerman, Jody Moore, Donna Oswald, Shelley Campbell, Michelle Phillips, Debbie Thompson, Wes Lander, and Sherri Becker. And Commissioner Knoll. And Pat Henderson. And Commissioner Klein.
Was that only the department heads? Okay.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Some will be using the breakout platform soon.
So 1:35, so it'd be.
She's got 2:05 here coming up.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. That was one thing that I learned in the KAC is we don't have to calculate the minutes in our head. You don't have to say the minutes, you can just say when you come out. So I was like, oh, I wanted to tell you. No more math at the table. I like it.
Yeah. Yeah, ultimately, that is the thing, there are the, the time that you come out.
And Shelley's with Debbie, so. That's my, Connie, Debbie, the EOC, Sheriff Lori, Sherri Becker. Yeah. And Shelley Campbell, you got that.
And any department head.
Yeah, I can't, I have to, yeah. So if they don't come out, then they're going to automatically be forced out anyways. Could you guys actually have an extra minute?
Okay, so are we on?
Yeah, you're recording.
Okay. Do I hear another motion?
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into Executive Session. The subjects to be discussed during the closed or executive meeting are matters relating to security measures at the Atchison County Courthouse, a public building. The justification for the closed meeting is that the discussion of such matters at an open meeting would jeopardize security measures that protect a public.
Over the road, like everything.
Not low. It's mostly, it's mostly, it's within 150 miles.
So if you're wanting to. The Operations Center, 1010443 US Highway 59, Atchison, Kansas 66002. Those present will be the county commissioners and Sherri Becker, Sheriff Lori, Connie Ellerman, Jody Moore, Donna Oswald, Shelley Campbell, Michelle Phillips, Debbie Thompson, and Pat Henderson, Wes Lander.
I'll second.
They will come out at 2:30.
2:30? I'll second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. We're going back into Executive Session. Okay, we're back in session. The next thing would be another public comment. Do we have any public comment? Not seen any. Do I have a motion to adjourn at 2:31?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.